Dog issues? We were just trying to figure out where that is in that picture.
Oh, hi. Good morning, everybody. Where what is? Looks like it's.
I think it's Zion.
I was gonna say Utah.
Yeah, maybe. It's either, yeah.
Okay, they're ready. We're on. Are you ready? Okay. Good morning, everybody. It's fine. We're here for the weekly-ish Morning County Board of Commissioners Board Session. It's Wednesday, March 12th, 2025. It's 9:01 a.m. And we're in the Senator Hearing Room at 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. And if you would, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right. We have one individual signed up for public comment. Is it Dylan?
Yes.
All right, sir. Would you come over to this microphone? Dylan Boshler. And when you sit down, pull the microphone close to your face, talk clearly, and introduce yourself for the record and name an address.
Okay, good morning, Chairs or Commissioners. My name is Dylan Boshler with North St. Anne Pavement Company in Stateon. Our address is 41203 Kingston Lines Drive. Item 10 on the agenda today is approval of the Detroit Mariners project. This week, NSP received the county's denial of our war protest on this project. To be honest, we never expected to win this protest. We aren't going to continue fighting the courts. We aren't going to go to the press with it. That's not who we are. And we simply wanted this to serve as a wake-up for the county. What the response did not include, though, was the answer to the question we've had since the first award was canceled and it was put out to bid again. How and why can the county justify spending $1 million more on the same or less of a project with the exact same contractor? At every turn, the county has claimed to be acting in the best interest of the taxpayer when its actions say different. This isn't the first time NSP has had issues with the county's procurement process in the last five years. And that's why I'm here today to implore you to do a full overhaul and review of your procurement processes. At a time when the infrastructure spending is being threatened across the state, this kind of waste and inefficiency is unacceptable and it must be addressed. Thank you for your time today and I welcome any questions.
We don't take questions. We just listen. Thanks for being here.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
All right. We have two proclamations today. The first one is under Health and Human Services to consider approval designating the month of March 2025, as Intellectual and Developmental Disability Awareness Month. Karen, Ally, Paul, not Nye. Okay. Same thing. Just make sure you're talking closely to the microphone. And the remote one. Brenda, did you determine if it was on?
Yeah, we did.
Great. Okay. Thanks. So just introduce yourselves.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Karen Perkins and I'm the Marion County IDD Program Manager. And I am here this morning with... Do you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Ally Bank.
And?
My name is Paul Hines. I am the Support and Employment Coordinator for Health and Services.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah. So March is recognized nationally as Developmental Disability Awareness Month. And each year around this time, we engage in activities to promote respect for and educate others about individuals who experience IDD. We seek to raise awareness about the inclusion of people with IDD in all facets of community life, as well as the awareness of barriers that people still sometimes face engaging in their communities in which they live. We come before you today to share some information about IDD services and to request that you adopt a proclamation proclaiming March to be IDD Awareness Month in Marion County. So there are over 36,000 people who receive IDD services in the state of Oregon. And in Marion County, we provide services to about 10% of those 36,000 individuals. We have seen our program grow tremendously over the last decade, but significant growth just in the last year in 2024. We've seen our enrollment grow by seven and a half percent just in the one year, most of the growth being in the birth to 14-year age range. These diagrams compare the children and adults receiving services through our program, as well as where they are living to receive their services. So you'll see that most of the individuals receiving services in Marion County live in their own or a family home, with about a quarter of those individuals receiving services in a licensed or certified setting. All of Oregon's IDD services are provided in the home and community. Oregon was the first state to close its institutions for individuals with IDD and support people's right to choice to live in their own community and in their own homes. In 1990, approximately 1,200 individuals still lived at Fairview Training Center here in Salem. And the last residents left Fairview in the year 2000. Today, people can access services in their own home, in a family home, with or without support, in IDD-certified licensed foster homes and in 24-hour residential care. In 2008, Oregon adopted an employment-first policy to promote community-based employment for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. So this... This employment-first policy is a philosophy and a presumption that Oregon or that individuals can work fully integrated jobs in their community. In 2013, Oregon adopted a Medicaid State Plan Amendment that makes IDD services a federal entitlement program. All Medicaid-eligible individuals who experience IDD are eligible to receive services. So as I mentioned just a minute ago, Oregon adopted an employment-first policy in 2008. In the years since, we've seen a shift from individuals with IDD working in what were called sheltered workshops to working in integrated jobs in their communities. Ally Bank and Paul Hines are here this morning to share information about Ally's employment journey and the impact of community-integrated employment in her life. Ally, if you want to go ahead?
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ally Bank. I want to talk about where I came from and how I got into this wonderful job I have right now. I used to work at Mounding and Training Center, a sheltered workshop, making kits for pregnant women, kits for... and juvenile, kits for men and women in prison. Then I would deliver them to their sites, being based on productivity and being community... in the community, integrated employment-receiving, and hourly above minimum wage. After I got transferred to work options, I shredded confidential papers, got paid based on how much I shredded. Then after that, I did office work and reception. It didn't take me long after to learn the job. After a few months, I got hired by Marcy Holmes. I had an interview with her and soon hired. I was there 10 years at Catholic Community Services. Then after my 10th year anniversary, I wanted to explore my options, wanted to learn new things, new skills. I worked at Costco through CDS, which was I would give out samples to the customers. And I also worked in a channel for us, like cleaning the parks and stuff like that. But then I did a lot of searching around for jobs that fit my skills what I learned from office and reception. Lillian Elliott told me that there was an opening for Office Specialist One and I should apply for it. I did. Then I waited for the call for an interview. I got the call. I came up with... And I came up with questions to ask and everyone was very impressed with my questions and answers. I had them laughing. They got me to laugh as well. After that, I was waiting patiently. And then I got the call from Nye. She told me I got the job and I was so excited. I want to take the time to thank Nye, Karen, and others in the interview, as well as Lillian Elliott, for giving me the opportunity to this amazing job through Marion County and my team. I am so grateful and blessed to be part of amazing team with Edith, Gabby Gretchen, and Nye as my supervisor. The county does so many amazing things that, like hiring anyone with or without disabilities. They help the community. I never thought I would be a part... We get the opportunity to work for them. I'm so proud I will be a part of the county for a long time, or until it's time for me to retire, which is a long ways away. Since working for Marion County, I felt confident in my success and I'm excited about how far I came to be a part of the job that makes me welcomed. Everyone is super nice. I'm proud to say I'm a Marion County worker. Thank you, everyone, for giving me the chance to show that anyone can do anything, anywhere. Just set your mind to it and you can do anything you want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally.
You're welcome.
Paul, do you want to talk a little bit about the services that you provide?
Absolutely. Good morning, Commissioners. Paul Hines with Garden Services. Our goal, our mission at Garden is to support individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities to be a part of their community through employment, career, retirement opportunities. We have several partnerships with the state and within the county. There's a mailroom. We work with ODOT, recycling, garbage, all kinds of jobs within Garden. But we also provide traditional employment services, which Ally receives. Those can look a multitude of different ways. Job development, where someone works one-on-one with somebody to figure out what kind of job they want to do, prepare to obtain that job by researching, building a resume, filling out applications, and then support with the interview process. We also provide on-the-job coaching when community-integrated employment. So when individuals like Ally have a job, she has somebody that's there to support them when she needs it, to provide clarification, to provide support and advocacy, dealing with her coworkers, talking to her supervisor, ensuring that she understands her responsibilities and is successful in that role. Ally is somebody that has actually moved to a fade pretty quickly. So she's building a lot of independence and her coaching has dropped down significantly because of the amazing job that she's doing and what she's doing with the county and providing that support to them. We also, not only traditional services at Garden, we also have special programs. This summer and every summer, we have a youth transition program where we provide work opportunities to youth in the community through the transition program that's partnered with Salem Kaiser Public Schools, as well as a Project Search program, which is a nine-month internship for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities that partners with a host business where they spend nine months learning three specific jobs before they graduate. And over that time, we build up those skills and that job-preparedness and building up the accountability and the responsibility and learning hard skills as well as soft skills, such as communication and responsibility, so that they can go on and obtain that competitive integrated employment in their community and be successful. At Garden, we not only focus on supporting the individuals that we are supporting, but we also provide that support to the community. You know, we're advocates. We're spokespeople of a sort. You know, this is a part of my role is educating the public on what we do and the amazing things that Ally and her peers can accomplish. So I implore you to reevaluate the things that you're... the people in your life that you know or you don't know. Reevaluate delegation, things like that. What tasks can be performed and how people like Ally can succeed in roles like the county. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
All right. So while March provides an opportunity for heightened awareness, true awareness happens when we commit to creating accessible environments and opportunities year-round. So some things that you can do to promote IDD awareness in your community. Advocate for policy and practices and laws that will help make all places in our community accessible. Engage with individuals with IDD, listening to their perspectives and learning from them. Hire individuals who experience IDD or support a local business who employs people with IDD. Take steps to ensure your business or organization provides inclusive and accessible services. Like or share social media posts that support people with IDD in the community. And then participate in local events, supporting our IDD community and sharing information promoting them. And this is my shameless plug for an event that you can participate in or promote for this next week. So next Tuesday, March 18th, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at Columbia Hall at the Fairgrounds, we are hosting a Supports and Services Resource Fair. We're partnering with ISN and RCO Brokerrages to offer this opportunity for folks to network and learn from each other about services and supports that are out in the community. So we're hoping to see you there. We're hoping you can join in this event. Yeah. Do you have any questions for us?
I don't have any questions, but I feel like Paul... And I do have a question for Ally, but Paul, don't you have an event coming up? Doesn't Garden have an event?
Yes, we do.
Do you want to plug it while you're here?
Yeah, absolutely. We have a luncheon next Wednesday that's at Mission Mill.
Yes, well, I'm at Heritage Center.
Well, I'm at Heritage Center. We do have a luncheon. Yeah, that's an event for members of the community to support Garden, both with that personal advocacy as well as, you know, financially. It is a fundraiser of sorts. And then we also participate in community events all over. We'll be at the Chariots Event today. I will be at the Transition Night this afternoon over at Salem Kaiser Public Schools Building, as well as the Resource Fair next week.
That's great. Ally, do you want to tell us anything specific about your job or what maybe your favorite part is? Aside from the people? Because I know most of them. I think, I agree, they're pretty great.
Just everything is awesome. I mean, I'm learning new things like billing and scanning documents and stuff like that. It's a really good, like, I love this job, so.
Good. Well, we're glad you're here.
Thank you.
Karen, thanks for going through the process. I know it's been a want of yours for a while. I don't know when we had this conversation, like, two years ago, maybe?
It feels like it's been that long.
It may have... I mean, everything around here takes a long time, but it feels like yesterday because we have so much in our days. I'm just thrilled that the county was willing and interested to support the process to allow Ally and peers like her to be members of our employment community here.
And we appreciate your support.
Yeah. It was an easy thing to do. Commissioner Cameron, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve the proclamation designating the month of March 2025 as Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in Marion County.
I second the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Would you please begin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Before the Board of Commissioners from Marion County, Oregon, in the matter proclaiming the month of March 2025 as Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in Marion County. Proclamation. This matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled public meeting on March 12th, 2025. Whereas no fewer than 3,500 residents of Marion County live with intellectual and developmental disabilities, and whereas Marion County acknowledges individuals who experience intellectual and developmental disabilities are active and valued members of its community, and whereas Marion County acknowledges the role of the community to engage and support the health, safety, prosperity, and success of every citizen, including individuals who experience intellectual and developmental disabilities, and...
Whereas Marion County strives to support safe and healthy opportunities for individuals who experience intellectual and developmental disabilities to engage with and access their communities. And whereas Marion County believes work is a fundamental part of life and therefore, individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities should be included in opportunities to participate in the local workforce. And whereas Marion County invites and challenges its community to develop and promote accessible and affordable housing, opportunities for employment and community engagement, inclusive and accessible recreational activities, and promote access to health services for people who experience intellectual and developmental disabilities, so they may live in a world of choice and possibility. Now, therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that the month of March 2025 is Intellectual and Developmental Disability Awareness Month in Marion County, dated at Salem, Oregon, this 12th day of March 2025. And now we're going to take some pictures. Are you ready? Great. Come right on up here.
Don't worry. Don't worry about that.
Everybody look here. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Do you want to get in the middle?
Yes. I'm like short. Ready? One, two, three, smile. Awesome. Thank you.
It's nice to meet you. Thanks for what you do. If we can help, you let us know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah. Do you want to... Want us to grab... Would you like that?
I'd consider myself out of that. I've read that one before.
Thank you.
Did he want to suspend the...
I have. He's no.
Okay.
All right. We're going to move on to consider another proclamation designated the month of March as National Problem Gambling Awareness Month.
Hi. Hi. Good morning. My name is Heidi Johnson and I am part of the Marion County Health Promotion and Prevention Team. Sorry. Just getting over getting sick. So thank you for having me. I'm here because March is designated as Problem Gambling Awareness Month in the National Council on Problem Gambling, as well as the state of Oregon. And I want to hopefully have March proclaim those Problem Gambling Awareness Month in Marion County as well. So I run our Marion County Problem Gambling Prevention Program and the goals of the program are to prevent problem gambling, to increase awareness and reduce youth gambling, as well as encourage responsible gambling. So what is gambling? Problem gambling is the continuation of gambling activities despite negative personal, social, or financial consequences. And this is the importance of increasing awareness, to lower stigma and shame around seeking help, promote responsible gambling, decrease negative individual and social impacts like higher rates of bankruptcy, loss of relationship, criminal activity, and mental health and addiction problems. So these are some of the awareness activities and accomplishments that we are doing in the Problem Gambling Prevention Program. And we'll go over them. So the Middle School Art Search, Island Youth Summit, high school video contest and workshops, as well as school presentations and tapling events, the Power of Social Connection presentations, prevention team newsletter, and our social media. So this is some examples. I did hand you a calendar. We do a middle school art search. This is the third year that I've been involved in it, but the second year that Marion County has fully taken it over. It used to be a state program. And I go out and present. I go out and present in middle school classrooms and talk about problem gambling and behavioral addiction and substance use addiction. And then I also promote my art contest. And last year, we had 175 submissions from various schools throughout Marion County. With the submissions, we run a voting throughout Marion County and we designate the top 12 to be in our awareness. And with that, we had 13 different workshops. The workshops included things like leadership development, personal growth, health and well-being, including substance use and problem gambling prevention, life readiness, college career, workforce readiness, personal finance and adulting. And I gave you some lanyards. Those lanyards I made partly to spread sports gambling awareness on sports teams, and I'll talk a little more about that later. But I also gave those out at Eyelid, and each of the participants were able to wear that with their name badge. And then it came with a little awareness thing with 988 on it. So that was an exciting thing to be part of. And see that those are in all of the pictures. Another thing that I work on is Healthy Choices High School Video Contest, and this is a collaboration between Polk County, Marion County. We've included, we've brought CCTV on, Capital Community Media has joined us, as well as Salem Health as a sponsor. And last year, we received 15 videos throughout Marion County. And the goal is the youth are able to use their voice to spread a message about what is impacting them, specifically surrounding alternative choices to risky behaviors or healthy habits or healthy choices. It acts as a protective factor by giving youth a healthy skill and an opportunity to use their voice to educate the community and their peers. We just did some workshops at Capital Community that Capital Community offered graciously for free to high school students. And we had six participants, which at first I was kind of bummed out, but then when I realized how intense it is to teach six youth how to make and create and edit videos, I was kind of happy we had six youth. That happened March 6th, 7th, and 8th. So, we, with the sponsorship of Salem Health, offered them dinner. We gave them tacos and pizza, which they're very excited about. And then they learned all the skills, how to make a video, how to edit a video. And we had, one of those youth is now going to join our video contest, so we're excited about that. These pictures right here are from our awards night last year. So, the videos that we had, we narrowed it down to the top three. And then we invited all of those youth and their family and friends and teachers to come to a red carpet award night, at Capital Community. And we had about 40 people attend. We actually had, some of the parents were emotional. They were crying. They were like, our youth have never had this experience before. It was really, it's really neat. So we're doing this again. The videos are due on April 18th. I'm hoping to receive more than 15. We'll see this year.
Advertise greatly on Instagram.
Oh, my gosh, so much advertisement. I also reach out personally to so many teachers and so much staff and assistant principals. They're probably sick of me, but I'm like, hey, it's me again. We have gotten a few media production teachers that are very involved, and they're consistently joining us. So, I just advertised at Woodburn High School yesterday. I did a health fair pop-up, and I gave flyers to tons of youth. And some of them seemed really excited about the idea. So, we are going to have our red carpet award night on May 16th, and I will send you an invite if any of you want to come participate. It's going to be on a Friday night. This is, I'm going to play a video from last year. This Can we go to the next slide? Well, I don't know. It's not working for the next slide. But, let's see here. Oh, there we go. Okay, so that was one of the videos. And, yeah, it was really cool that Silverton was participating this year. I try really hard to get more of the rural schools involved. And sometimes it's a little more challenging, but I think I'm making some progress. So they've signed up to do it again this year. So, we'll see what we get. Another activity that we're doing specifically for older adults is I'm working with Marion County Health Promotion, Mental Health Promotion, sorry, with Kelly. And we are putting on an event in Silverton coming up on March 20th. And it is for older adults. We're having Nermal Adar from the Older Adult Behavioral Health of OHA. And she's going to come to a presentation, and we're going to have like a social connection activity as well. And we're excited just to bring more awareness to the importance of social connection, which again acts as a protective factor for things like problem gambling. I will have some problem gambling resources as well, but I like to try to integrate problem gambling outreach within other events. I find that people absorb it a little bit better than me saying, be careful how you gamble. So, we're excited to see how that goes. It's going to be at the Silverton 50+. And then, other things that we do, again, classroom presentation, we work on stress management and coping tools at tapling events, which we just did at Woodburn yesterday. We, I collaborate a lot with mental health promotion for outreach. Right now, we're promoting to athletes, coaches, and parents, which is partly why I made those lanyards. Sports gambling is really prevalent among athletes, and so I'm trying to reach younger and younger audiences, and also bring awareness to the coaches and the coaching staff that there is a risk factor for gambling within their youth. And then I'm right now creating more resources for sports gambling awareness. My 2025 objectives are to build resiliency among youth, work with 18- to 24-year-old sports gambling awareness. So, I'm planning to start reaching out to more colleges within Marion County as well, work within the community. We will be conducting a community readiness assessment starting in July this coming year. The last one we did was in 2018. And so, we'll be, we were supposed to do it in five years, but there was a pandemic. I don't know if you all remember that. So, it pushed everything back a little bit. And so, we will be conducting that. And then we will hopefully be able to use that data to understand a little bit better about how gambling is impacting our community. And then again, I'm going to continue to do older adult outreach events and promote responsible gambling within that community. Thank you for your consideration. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Heidi. I don't have any questions. Commissioners?
No, Heidi, thank you for your work on this important area, especially in youth.
Yeah, I appreciate your enthusiasm for what you're doing.
Yeah.
Commissioner Willis, do you want to make a motion?
I do. Madam Chair, I move that we approve proclamation designated the month of March 2025 as National Problem Gambling Awareness Month in Marion County.
Well, second the motion.
A motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Bless you. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Commissioner Willis?
Okay. In the matter proclaiming the month of March 2025 as Problem Gambling Awareness Month in Marion County, proclamation. This matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled public meeting on March 12th, 2025. Whereas the National Council on Problem Gambling and the state of Oregon have designated March 2025 as Problem Gambling Awareness Month, and?
Whereas the health, whereas the health of Marion County residents is of utmost importance to the well-being of Marion County as a whole. And whereas problem gambling is a public health concern impacting Marion County residents of all ages and backgrounds in all communities, and has significant personal, social, health, and financial repercussions, and?
Whereas problem gambling is treatable, and treatment is effective in minimizing this harm to both individuals and society as a whole. And whereas Marion County is dedicated to reducing the negative effects of gambling for all Marion County residents through balanced policies and effective systems of problem gambling services, such as targeted prevention programs and treatment services. Now, therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that the month of March 2025 is Problem Gambling Awareness Month in Marion County, dated at Salem, Oregon, this 12th day of March 2025. And now you get to take a picture. Thank you.
Ready or not, here it goes.
Ready, smile.
Three, two, one.
Yeah, your socks are very distracting.
I was showing him my Lincoln socks.
As your pant leg comes up, the colors get brighter.
On a recent trip to Washington, DC, I had to buy Abraham Lincoln socks.
Oh, yeah. Alright, now we will move into the consent calendar. Commissioner, I don't know who read it last.
I'll go.
Thank you. Commissioner Cameron?
Okay, Madam Chair, under Consent Calendar, first, Board of Commissioners, Board Appointment, Compensation Board, approve orders appointing Lori Christopher, Jolene Kelly, Melissa Valaria to the Marion County Compensation Board, with terms ending December 31st, 2025. Under Business Services, approve a utility easement with Portland General Electric for a non-exclusive perpetual easement and right-of-way for real property located at 3940 Ogdenville Highway Southeast in Salem, Oregon, as described in Exhibit A. Under Human Resources, approve an order to adopt revised Marion County Administrative Policy Number 207, Volunteers and Volunteer Service, and newly established Procedure 207A, Affiliated Volunteers and Volunteer Service, and 207B, Episode Volunteer, Episodic Volunteers and Volunteer Service, as referred to in Exhibit A. Also, under Human Resources, approve a recommendation to update the classification and adjust pay grade upward for classifications, 008, Contracts and Procurement Manager, 315, Grant Contracts Compliance Analyst, 619, Juris Doctor Prosecution, 632, Deputy District Attorney II, 634, Trial Team Supervisor, 931, Law Clerk, 016, Legal Secretary I, and re-titled to Legal Assistant I, 017, Legal Secretary II and re-titled to Legal Assistant II, and update the classification and uphold the pay grade for classification codes, 307, Contract Specialist, 308, Contract Specialist Senior, 319, Budget and Grants Manager, 631, Deputy District Attorney I, and 633, Deputy District Attorney III. I still have a little breath left. Under Public Works, approve incoming funds memorandum of understanding with Liquidity Services Operations LLC, DBA, Gov. Deals in the amount of $900,000 to provide online auction services for liquidation of county surplus vehicles with an ending term date of three years from execution.
I second the motion.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Next, we'll move on to action items. And Justice Justin Kidd is going to come forward and talk to us about the Justice of the Peace Pro Temore. Good afternoon. No, good morning. It feels like afternoon after that consent calendar.
I appreciate you. So, I want to just say two things today. This is a story of growth and of service. So...
I'm sorry, did you introduce yourself, even though I said hello to you?
Thank you so much. My name is Justin Kidd, so I'm the Justice of the Peace here.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. So it is really a story of growth and service, right? So incredible growth in the court over the last couple of years. So, the headline here is that justice court cases are way up. We did 31,502 cases in the last calendar year. So that's an increase of 75% over our caseload in 2021, which is when I came in, and also an increase of 7,500 cases just in the last calendar year. So a 33% growth from 2023 to 2024. It's a lot. And so where does the increase come from? Largely, it comes from a dramatic increase in the number of violations, mostly from Oregon State Police. So, it turns out, the first couple of years, we partnered with them. They were under-resourced because it was hard to find officers after COVID. And they have now come back up to full resources, so they're writing a lot more tickets, which makes the community safer. But it means a lot more work for us, work that we're happy to do. Also, increase in FED filings. FED filings went up from 578 to 826 last year, so also about a 42% increase. And then smoke claims are about the same, and then weddings are also up. So what does that mean? Well, it means that we get to keep a whole bunch more people safe, but it means that there's a lot more work, a lot more cases, a lot more hearings. And so, I have two wonderful people who helped make that happen. So, I would like to introduce to you Jared Howard and Rachel Federico. These are my fabulous volunteers, my wing people, my friends. And so, they cover both when I have professional circumstances that would create a conflict, and also just when I'm not available. So you'll notice I came in a little late today. It's because we've had so much cases, so many cases right now, it's hard for me to come down. So, I'm just ever so thankful, both to them and also to you, for their continued appointment. And I would ask that you might reappoint them for another year.
Thank you. Would either of you like to introduce yourself and say hello, or offer anything?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jared Howard. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I'd appreciate the opportunity to serve as another year as Justice Pro Tem. I really enjoy it. I enjoy it because of my day-to-day grind. I'm advocating for a client in a position, I primarily do the FED work, the court. This allows me to both sit back but also engage with, I'm sorry, that's okay, low voice. So this role allows me to engage with different competing positions and listen and ask questions and make a decision. I appreciate that. The other aspect that I really enjoy about this is it allows me to employ my time and my professional experience in a way that benefits the community. The community I live in, the communities that my family is growing up in. So, I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Rachel Federico, and I am a Justice of the Peace Pro Temore. I have my volunteer badge right here, and I am very biased, but this is the best volunteer position within our county services. I love having the opportunity to work with the court for a few reasons. First, I think that the work that this court is doing is phenomenal in terms of access to our community members to justice and swift justice. The dockets move very quickly, and people are able to get in and have their matters heard, have finality of their matters. And I can say, in observing Judge Kidd work, to truly be heard, and to have that opportunity regardless of how their cases end up. Secondly, I think that this court is allowing our circuit court here in Marion County to move faster, to process those cases faster, and to effect justice more swiftly, because we're taking a lot of the caseload off of the plate of those judges. And finally, I would just like to emphasize that we are here for the people of Marion County, doing weddings, ensuring that people have access to marriage. And I had the pleasure of being part of about 20 weddings last year. of being part of about 20 weddings last year, in addition to filling in for the FED docket and traffic docket as needed, and I'm delighted to get to do the work again. I have enjoyed my time very much at the pleasure of the Commissioners, and I hate an unsolved mystery, I think you are correct that that photo is from a national park, but I believe it's Yosemite, I think that's El Capitan, and in the top corner it says "Learn About This Picture," so if someone clicks on that, we can see where it's from.
Look at you, she's like clicked the button. Well.
Can you do that?
Not right now. Just to keep, because we have a lot on this meeting, but thank you for pointing that out, and as soon as this is over, hang out, we'll click the button.
Yosemite or Zion, yeah.
If it's Yosemite, I can get a signing bonus here.
Yes, lunch is on me. Thank you both for being here and for the service that you're providing to our community, and also supporting Justin and his role. We know that there's been a lot going on in this community and statewide, and it's nice to know that we do have some of that alleviation of some of the less detailed crimes moving away from the circuit court, so they can handle some of the more pressing matters around criminal law.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I have noticed going up through that Aurora interchange that people have been slowing down a little bit, so maybe some of that's taken an effect.
That's the goal, and I'm sure you also saw the social media on what's happening in the safety corridor on Eland Road there.
Yep.
So I have not yet seen those tickets, I anticipate though that I will see tickets from there, because that's how we keep people safe.
Slow down, yeah.
Good.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything from you?
Nope.
Okay, yes please.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move that we approve orders reappointing Rachel Federico and Jared Howard as Justice of the Peace Tempore for the Marion County Justice of the Peace District with terms ending March 11th, 2026.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you both.
Thank you for your service, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, Carol is going to come forward, and we're going to learn about the LADPC, the Local Alcohol and Drug Planning Commission, Committee, excuse me, Appointment of Jill Pearson.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Let's try this again.
I can, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good morning. So as you mentioned, so for the record, Carol Heard Addiction Treatment Services Division Director with Marion County Health and Human Services. And I am here today seeking support for the appointment of Dr. Jill Pearson to the Local Alcohol and Drug Planning Committee with a term to end December 31st, 2028. Dr. Pearson is a mother and a pediatrician who has worked in Oregon since 1999 and in this community since 2013. She has directed various quality improvement initiatives to include collaboration with multiple departments within the hospital where she previously worked, to include ensuring up-to-date care and standardized protocols for patients from 35 weeks to 18 years old. Dr. Pearson was instrumental in the creation of the Neonatal Opioid Withdrawal Syndrome, or NOS Collaborative, which included substance use treatment providers and DHS child welfare. She witnessed an increase in the volume of newborns who had been exposed to opiates during pregnancy, and was able to update the care of this population, which reduced their length of stay in the hospital, reduced the use of morphine, and increased family-centered care. As you know, the Local Alcohol and Drug Planning Committee is an advisory group to the Marion County Local Health Authority and the Marion County Health and Human Services Administrator, which identifies needs and priorities for alcohol and drug prevention and treatment services that best suit the needs and priorities of the community. Dr. Pearson has firsthand experience observing how substance use can impact families, and has a passion for this population of individuals and wants to influence change, and we believe that Dr. Pearson would be a valuable addition to the committee.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments?
No ma'am.
I'm thrilled she wants to be on this committee and that she's working with us in this community. She does great work. All right.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve an order appointing Jill Pearson to the Marion County Local Alcohol and Drug Planning Committee with a term ending December 31st, 2028.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes.
Thank you Commissioners.
Nice to see you. All right, Kelly, going to come forward to consider approval of the Public Improvement Agreement with Sigmund Excavation and Construction, the amount of $5,774,158 for the Detroit Marina's Excavation and Resiliency Project through December 31st, 2026.
My, good morning.
Good morning.
Apparently, I opened my presentation at the wrong slide. All right. My name is Kelly Weiss, I'm the Community Services Director here in our Community Services Department, and I'm very pleased to bring before you a potential construction contract with Sigmund Excavation and Construction for completion of the excavation of Detroit Marinas. So what is this project? We are looking at excavating underneath the two marinas at Detroit Lake in order for them to operate at a lower lake level. So over the last few years, anybody who's been up at the lake knows that the summer lake season keeps getting a little bit shorter and shorter for a number of reasons, and that really has a detrimental impact to the communities up there and to our tourism season. So being able to excavate underneath those two marinas will allow those marinas to operate at a lower lake level and extend their summer season and thus provide even more resources for the community. So we are looking at excavating underneath the two marinas in the city of Detroit, we're talking about Detroit Lake Marina, which is the marina that is to the left as you're coming into town from the Salem area, as well as Cane's Marina, which is the marina that's located to the right as you're coming into town, but it's through some side streets to get there. So this project, as I was mentioning before, is really about economic development for those communities and resiliency after the 2020 fires. So if we are to excavate underneath the two marinas, it's anticipated that this will bring an additional $1.2 million annually in direct and indirect economic activity to the entire canyon area, with $14.6 million in net economic gain over the next 20 years. And the reason for this is because those two marinas really are the anchor to the Detroit Lake and their ability to be able to be a tourism destination. There's a lot of different factors for why this is a need, and why the full pool of the lake has been decreasing over time, includes changing weather patterns, additional municipal water needs, fish and wildlife mitigation, as well as a five-foot reduction in the full pool for mitigating seismic hazards to the dam. So we've been working on this project for a while, and it's in three phases. The first phase was really determining, okay, if we're going to excavate underneath those two marinas, what do we do with those tons of dirt, and where do we place it? So in 2023, we developed some beneficial reuse options, so what do we do with that dirt, how do we place it? And then reached out to the community and determined what the best preferred alternative was, and that was approved by the board in late 2023. And then in 2024, we've been working on Phase Two, which is engineering and permitting, really trying to figure out exactly how we move forward with this project. And right now, we're in between Phases Two and Three, and Phase Three is construction. So the preferred alternative, where are we going to place this dirt? That was selected as an extension of the Osprey Point Peninsula. So the idea is to be able to extend from the little walking path that reaches out to Osprey Point and keep that higher level above the lake, moving to, we call it the captain's hook, basically, so that way we can do a few different things. The idea being it creates a new recreation destination, so that area that is enclosed by the captain's hook is a very shallow area, and it will create an area that is a little bit segregated from the boat traffic and the wakes, and be much easier for people to recreate who don't necessarily have boats, whether that be kayaks or swimming. It'll create that separation between the boat traffic, and in doing so, it will also define the safe boating channel. So it'll block the existing shallow water hazard I was mentioning between the channel and Apide Island and Osprey Point, to really make it very clear to boaters where the channel is and where the deep water is. And then of course, excavating underneath the two marinas will extend the summer tourism season, as I was mentioning before. So what I'm asked 99% of the time is what is the construction timeline? When will this actually happen? So right now, we're in the drawdown period just before the 2025 summer lake season. So if we are to work to approve this contract today, we'll start construction preparation. So no construction will be occurring during the 2025 lake season, it will not impact. The earliest that construction is set to begin is after this lake season, September 1st, 2025. So the primary construction window for this project is this upcoming drawdown period, so this upcoming fall 2025 through winter 2026. So we're looking for substantial completion of this project by May 1st, 2026, so before the 2026 lake season. But there is the opportunity for a secondary construction period during the 2026, so fall 2026, through December 31st, 2026 drawdown period. And then an opportunity for a conditional extension through the end of that drawdown period, should the board elect to do so at that time. So the proposed contract with Sigmund Excavation and Construction, this table covers the scope summary and the price. Effectively, we're looking at pre-construction and preparation for the excavation, then excavation underneath the two marinas, Detroit Lake Marina and Cane's Marina, and then sediment placement, as well as additional items related to the excavation, for a price of $5,774,158 is the bid, with a change order cap within the contract at 1%, which is $57,748,000, and anything above that would require a board order to approve. So this project is funded by quite a few different funding sources, from federal revenue, state revenue, and local funds. We have two grants for federal revenue, which is the bulk of the funding. We have Marion County American Rescue Plan Act funding at $3 million, as well as a 2023 congressionally-directed spending request, which is channeled through HUD, Housing and Urban Development, for $2 million. So that's $5 million of federal revenue for the project. Then we also received a state grant from Business Oregon, the Brownfield Real Development Fund, for $60,000. And then we have allocated $50,000 of local funds thus far for the project through the Economic Development Program, which is Orion Lottery Proceeds. So anyone who can do math, that's about $5.1 million in revenue, which is not quite enough to cover what we're talking about for the construction bid price, as well as the total project cost. So we are currently looking for additional funding options, congressionally-directed spending, additional congressionally-directed spending from the federal government, we've applied for some of those funding for the upcoming year, as well as looking at using Opel Creek Promise funding. So this is funding that is received from the federal government, passed through the state of Oregon, to be able to support the canyon communities in their economic development, particularly after the wildfire. So this is funding that is very applicable to this project and could very well be utilized. And then of course, we have the opportunity to utilize additional economic development lottery funding as well for this project. So even though we have not fully determined how this project will be funded, we are very well aware of this need and anticipate having the resources to complete through to its completion. So with that, I am open to any questions and discussion.
Thanks, Kelly. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
We have two comments maybe, so the first, Kelly, is the Opel Creek Promise money we have.
We have applied for a grant through the federal government to the Forest Service, and because of how the original legislation was passed in 1996, those funds have to be allocated to the state of Oregon, and the state of Oregon determines how those monies get out to the canyon communities. So our next step to achieve those dollars is to tell the state of Oregon how we intend to utilize those dollars, and we would do that through what's called an implementation plan. So we are in the middle of creating an implementation plan to tell the state of Oregon how we intend to utilize those dollars. But they have been allocated from the federal government to the state.
So they're in the state, just not in Marion County.
And importantly, the state can't use them for Portland, for instance.
Absolutely, they are.
They can only be used for the canyon, correct?
Yes, for canyon economic development.
So I just want to put that on record, because I think it could seem a little bit more amorphous, like where's this money going to come from? But there has been $12 million allocated from the federal government specifically for the canyon.
Absolutely.
So there's sufficient resources for that sort of thing. Second thing is, and I hate to bring up bad memories, but this contract went out to bid twice, the same low bid won it both times, but I always feel annoyed when things don't go exactly the way we want. What kind of changes are you making to make sure that this sort of thing doesn't happen in the future, where we have to rebid a project?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it was a difficult situation for sure. We've been working with our contracts and procurement team to really clean up and determine how we set up some checklists and processes to ensure that we're hitting all of our notification requirements. And frankly, this is the first construction project that's been out of our Community Services Department. So there's a bit of a learning curve for this, but we are ready and willing to continue and keep growing, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cameron, any questions?
No questions, but Madam Chair, before we take a vote, I want to declare a potential conflict of interest. I think the population is, I'm looking at legal counsel, is pretty wide, but I am a customer of one of the marinas that we're going to be voting on, so just wanted to put that on the record.
Well, that's a good reminder that I have the same potential conflict, because I moor my vote at one of those marinas.
I rented a kayak once. I don't know.
I guess I gain a benefit from a few months longer using my boat.
I definitely didn't get a deal though, it was expensive.
I don't think we're personally benefiting, other than writing a check to rent this.
The money is flowing the wrong way.
That's funny. I appreciate you bringing it up, and I can't wait to write that check.
Just in case it ever comes up, that it is a wide population, so.
Okay, is there anything else? If not, Commissioner Willis, would you please make a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Public Improvement Agreement with Sigmund Excavation and Construction, the amount of $5,774,158 for the Detroit Marina's Excavation and Resiliency Project through December 31st, 2026.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, on the next item, number 11, I'd like a motion to remove. I pulled this from management update yesterday for further clarification, and I just now realized it as we were getting closer to the bottom.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move that we table the contract, the intergovernmental agreement with Marion County Sheriff's Office, the amount of $804,572 for the provision of mobile crisis services, material supplies, material costs, and one-time fleet purchase for the Connect and Protect Law Enforcement Behavioral Health Response through September 30th, 2027, so that we can do a little bit more work on that before we bring it back.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion? I just want to say for the record that we are going to move forward with this, there's just some internal discussion and math that needs to be completed for my satisfaction, and that's why I asked to pull it. Hearing nothing else, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes, thank you. Now we'll move on to Public Works. Austin is going to come forward and talk to us about a subdivision on Enchanted Ridge Property Owners Association. Oh, now, just for the record, the picture has changed, so when you click the button, it's not going to be the same. That's frustrating.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
So without the beautiful picture, I will continue.
Okay, it's still a beautiful picture.
It is, it is, right? So today I'm bringing you the consideration of accepting appeal for the hearings officer decision that approved a subdivision, this is 24-001 Enchanted Ridge. As you guys might remember, we had a zone change proceeding on this a couple of years ago. So to give some background on the case, there was a zone change that was done a couple of years ago to get this into an acreage residential zoning to then be partitioned or subdivided for this case that we're talking about today. So the hearings officer held a hearing on January 16th, 2025, and issued a decision approving the request on January 30th, 2025. The hearings officer approval was subsequently appealed. So some context on that appeal, is that the appeal has to do with the SGO hydrology review. The SGO is our sensitive groundwater overlay zone, so these parcels are in an area that has been mapped as having less groundwater than other areas in the county, so we have the applicants hire a professional hydrogeologist to perform a review of groundwater and existing wells and water consumption in the area, to then determine that if we were to place the three additional wells for the three lots in this subdivision, would that have a long-term detrimental effect on groundwater in the area? During the hearing, the During the hearing, the opponent who appealed this case did testify during the hearing that they thought the findings of the hydrology report were not accurate, and that they did not agree with the results of the hydrology report. So during the hearing, we discussed this, and the HO agreed that it wasn't able to be taken up at issue during the hearing, because the way our code reads, and this is Section 17.181130, which provides that in order for the county to accept a hydrology review, the report shall bear the stamp of a geologist, engineering geologist, or professional engineer registered with the state of Oregon. It is also a condition of approval to do a partition or subdivision in the SGO zone to have an approved hydrology report. So the applicants have an approved hydrology report. Opponents raised questions about that hydrology report at the hearing. Because they did not have another expert opinion or hydrologist there to combat the professional hydrology review, those concerns were not able to overturn the decision, and the hearings officer ultimately approved the request. So this appeal has come in without any further information. There's no other technical information or information provided by a different hydrogeologist. So for those reasons, planning staff is recommending that you decline to accept the appeal and uphold the hearings officer decision based on the lack of new evidence. The other options for consideration would be accept the appeal and schedule a public hearing with a date to be determined. I'll stop there with my overview and stand for any questions you have. But I'd be happy to go into any other parts of the case or other pieces you guys might want explained further.
Thank you, Austin. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Comments? I'm reading a letter from, I think, a neighbor. Okay. Commissioner Cameron?
No. I think I'm okay.
Can you address, I know that the process requires, and I'm not going to get this entirely right, because I'm not you, but the process requires an expert on a variety of different things, but specifically the hydro reports. But on pages 20, 19, and 20 of our packet, there is a letter from Dale Abraham that goes into a couple of areas that he's concerned about. And I assume that he's not an expert on sensitive groundwater overlay.
Correct.
And so what he's claiming in here isn't considered for the record, because he's not an expert?
Yeah, yes and no. So I would say it's considered for the record, because we have to consider everything someone submits to us, but because it's not expert testimony, or it's not another hydrogeologist, we have to, we can't look at it as saying, you know, this is another expert that is contesting the results of the hydrology report. It is a member of the public who is looking at the report, and they're contesting that they don't agree with some of the numbers in the report. And that puts us into the situation where the report was approved by our peer reviewer, hydrogeologist. The idea is that they're there to remain neutral, they are to come to a decision that meets the code, to come to a decision that preserves groundwater in the area.
So you, okay, so you had somebody review the hydro, what's the report called?
Hydrogeology Report.
Hydrogeology Report, thank you. And they agreed essentially with what that report's findings were?
Yeah, so the process is, when the applicant comes in to do a partition or subdivision in this SGO zone, they have to hire a hydrogeologist to produce a report showing that there is long-term availability of groundwater. Then that gets submitted to a county-appointed peer reviewer, who is neutral, who is not involved in the application, who reviews that report to say, does it meet the criteria in Marion County's code? Is this a valid hydrology report? So that's what happened, and then the neighbor came in and submitted the letter you're seeing to appeal this, because they do not agree with the results of the hydrology report.
Okay. And so he's claiming in this letter that the precipitation table that was provided in the original hydrogeology report is from 1892, and he's also claiming that he doesn't believe that a hydro report was done until 1996. And so the county-appointed, is it a hydrogeologist?
Yeah, yeah.
Basically looked at those, that information. Did he, did the county-appointed organization have the ability to look at this and say, oh, I agree or don't disagree? Or are they just reviewing the report itself?
They have the ability to say, we do or don't agree.
With Mr. Abraham?
No. So with the original, the original hydrology report, the applicants did, that's where our peer reviewer can disagree. And so it's my understanding that for Mr. Abraham, to be able to get to the level of having our hydrogeologist say, I agree or disagree, they, Mr. Abraham, would need to hire a hydrogeologist to produce a report. And that, it's my understanding, we could have that peer reviewed to see if there is...
And I guess, a question for my peers, is we're... My concern is, is that we have neighbors who can't afford to hire a hydrogeologist to do this work. We have many people in this community that can't afford to do any of this, which is why a lot of land isn't designed to be redeveloped. And it's our job to make sure that we're protecting everybody in that space. And so because we have a county-appointed company doing a review, then we feel that everybody is being, I suppose, heard or represented? Do you know what I'm trying to ask? Like, I just, I...
Yeah, I think that, in my mind, the question is, do we trust the county review?
Yes.
I think that's ultimately the question, because I...
And that's sufficient to represent everybody in the community?
Well, I think it's more like, sometimes in a court case, each side will hire their own expert.
Uh huh.
And the experts will have different opinions about the situation, but ultimately, you know, the jury has to decide what the facts of the case are, right? I think in a similar situation, it's like, do you trust the county and our planning team and the folks they hired to have an impartial review of a hydrology report? Or do we think that we need dueling experts? I'm a little bit cynical about the dueling experts in the litigation context.
I'm not necessarily suggesting that I need to have any dueling anything. I just, I really, I appreciate how you just outlined that. I just want to make sure that people understand that we're not just ignoring their concerns, and because they can't afford to fight this, that they're being ignored. So I suppose, I guess, I'm asking for you to put on the record exactly what the county is doing to make sure everything is factual, and that every neighbor who has a concern, whether they agree with the outcome or not, has been represented fairly by the county.
Yeah, certainly, I can do that. So apart from the peer review process, so we've got, you know, they submit their report, it's got to meet all these different qualifications that staff looks through to see, does the report have these elements? If it has all the elements, we send it to the peer reviewer. Peer reviewer does their review. That is one level of review to say that this should be sufficient for everyone. The other thing that we do, and we did in this case, is that allowed Mr. Abraham and the other neighbor, who was sort of a party to the appeal, they came into our office a couple of different times, and were able to review the hydrology report in full. We made copies of any pages that they would want to review. They attended the hearing and provided testimony at the hearing, and I talked with them at length after the hearing to kind of explain the SGO program, how it was developed, how it is implemented now, and sort of the limitations that the program has. So we try to really explain everything we can to them, give them all the data, which is how he was able to pull these numbers. And if I may just clarify for the record for anyone who may be hearing and listening at home, is that the major contested portion of this is the amount of rainfall that was used in the report, and the amount of rainfall wasn't used from 1892, but they, he found a table of rainfall amounts from 1892 on and said, I don't see that rainfall amount within these tables. But our peer reviewer was able to say that that number is a valid number to use for a rainfall calculation for the state of Oregon. So as staff, then retake that, because the peer reviewer, the professional, has said that it is able to be used in this report.
Okay.
So it's your opinion that the hydrology report that was submitted is valid, is a valid representation of the hydrology of the area, based on the peer review?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for going through this with me.
No problem. You're welcome.
All right. I don't have any other questions. We're going to change this up. Commissioner Cameron, would you make a motion?
Well, it's his motion, but I'm happy to make...
He stole yours to do the whole poll.
Sorry, I stole yours.
Oh, okay. Madam Chair, I will make a motion to decline to accept the appeal, upholding hearings officer's decision approving subdivision 24001, Enchanted Ridge.
I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Thanks, Austin.
Thank you.
All right. Carl, please come forward, so we can consider an approval of a multi-agency letter of agreement with United States Department of Agriculture, United States Department of Interior, and the Oregon Department of Forestry. Hello, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Carl Lund, driving engineer, married, young. So this agreement is to help our federal partners have something formal on the books, so that as we go through the process of developing a North Fork comprehensive recreation management plan, they have something to essentially guide their work on their internal offices. And it provides a framework with which we can work together with our partners.
That's it? Want to talk about what it does?
Oh, sure. So the goal...
Welcome back to the boardroom.
The goal of this...
He's like, I've already talked to you about this, Commissioners. I don't know why you need me to tell you something you already know.
The goal of this agreement is to develop a corridor in North Fork where it feels like it's one ownership. So when residents or visitors visit the North Fork corridor, they're able to go up the corridor and park where they need to, enjoy the recreation facilities where they need to, without going through multiple different owners and multiple different agencies.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
This is a $300,000 grant, I believe, that we awarded over a year ago, and this is the...
Outcome?
Outcome of finding, getting the letter to move forward on all that.
Great. All right, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the multi-agency letter of agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture, Willamette National Forest, the United States Department of Interior, the Bureau of Land Management, Northwest Oregon District Cascades Field Office, and the Oregon Department of Forestry for the development of the North Fork Comprehensive Recreation Management Plan.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Thanks, Carl.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. Okay, I'm going to pause the board of Commissioners meeting and open a public hearing for finance. Daniel's going to come forward, and we're going to consider adopting the fiscal year 2024, 2025 second supplemental budget. Do I need to, that's just land use, never mind.
Open a public hearing?
I did. He didn't hear me bing the gavel.
Well, yeah, yeah, but I thought you said you were considering the budget.
I did that, too. Thank you.
Good morning. And for the record, my name is Daniel Otato, and I'm Senior Budget Analyst with the Finance Department, representing the budget team. And in accordance with local budget law and county policies, I'm here to present the second supplemental budget of fiscal year 2425. This request increases the county budget by $21.6 million and brings the total county budget to about $779 million. Here are some key points about the supplemental. Public notice was published in the Woodburn Independent on March 5th, and copies have been available for review on the county website, as well as the Board of Commissioners office. The supplemental budget has been reviewed at the fund level detail by, at a management update on February 18th. And then we modified 19 funds within the supplemental budget. This supplemental budget increases FTE by 3.94 and includes a 4.14 increase in the Health and Human Services Department across various programs. And then there's just a small .2 FTE increase in information technology and a .4 increase reduction in the Public Works Department. And then in the general fund, intergovernmental federal increase by $9,622,225 from American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA funds. These funds, which are not new, were moved to the general fund to support the Marion County Radio System project for $2 million, and the ERP replacement project for $7,622,225. Transfers from the general fund increased by a net of $9,900,233 to support these projects. And then also, there was $234,000 for new capital projects, and then there was $43,000 for software solutions and finance and human resources. And just for context, this came up at our management update as well. The 9.6 million ARPA funds is part of the original 67.6 million allocation Marion County received over two distributions in 2021 and 2022. Just wanted to make that crystal clear. And then all of our capital projects are included in Appendix A of the packet, and this is our detailed appendix, which includes funding source, fund location, and some context about why those changes are occurring. So I hope that's helpful for context as we're reviewing those changes. I'll just go over a few of the highlights within there. So in the Public Works Fund, there's a total of $920,000 increases to capital projects. That includes a modification to the Meridian Road Bridge project that's on Abacaw Creek. There's the Battle Creek Roundabout contribution, Public Works Building 2 boiler replacement, and then there's the Boone's Ferry culvert replacement. In the Parks Fund, there's a project to install parking fee stations for $167,000. That's at six sites at various parks around the county. And then finally, in the Capital Improvement Projects Fund, there's an HVAC control panel replacement at the courthouse. This project, I just want to note, is partially funded by a $200,000 rebate from the Energy Trust of Oregon, and then the remainder is coming from the general fund. With that, just coming up ahead, our third supplemental budget, our final will be coming up in May. That's our final of this fiscal year. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Nope. None for me.
No? Commissioner Cameron, would you make a motion to close the public hearing and approve the...
Madam Chair, I move that we close the public hearing and adopt the fiscal year 2024 second supplemental budget.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Thanks, Daniel. Yes. Is there anything else for the record?
No, I want, can you click on the picture?
I think somebody has to go down to the mic and figure it out.
I think that's...
No, we can do it after we close this meeting.
I think that's Lake Tahoe.
Okay. You can go down there once you're done.
I will.
Okay. If there's anything else, we're adjourned.
I have one other thing. Just, we're not going to meet before the second or third greatest holiday of the year, which is St. Patrick's Day, which is coming up next Monday. So just want to encourage everyone to celebrate fully.
I will. Are you singing upstairs?
You know, there's been some rumors of that.
Okay. Everybody have a great and safe St. Patrick's weekend, which is coming up this weekend, I'm sure. With that, we're adjourned. Have a great day.